All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order here. Tonight, we have the honor of having Reverend Hoag here to do an invocation for us. Mr. Hoag, if you don't mind, if you could come up to the podium, please?
I see it's just like church where the front pews are the emptiest and then it... Yeah, you know what I mean. Well, we're glad you're all here tonight, and let's pray for a productive evening. Let us pray together. Father, I thank you that you have given us the privilege of coming before you individually and collectively. Thank you for your grace and your mercy, which you pour out on us so abundantly. And Father, we thank you that you have appointed these men and women to serve on this body of supervisors for us, this county, and I pray for their wisdom, and I pray for tonight's deliberations, that you would be in every word that's spoken. Father, I pray that you would bless our time together, and that we would acknowledge you in everything we do. Your word says that we are to trust in you with all of our heart and lean not on our own understanding in all our ways. We are to acknowledge you, and you will direct our path. So I pray that for us tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Hoag. Greatly appreciate that. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Not a problem. All right. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for that. All right, board members, I need an approval of the agenda, but there is two quick items, if we could add them to unfinished business. One would be a quick update on the Tyson Food closure. We just attended a meeting of that just prior to coming here, so we want to give you all a quick update on that. And number three would be the... Can't remember what it was, man. What was it? I know I told you all what it was.
Yeah, well, some of it was crew.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, okay, that's... All right, ladies and gentlemen, could I get a motion to approve with those amendments, please?
I move. So moved.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any disapprove? All right. Agenda is approved. The minutes for August 8th and August 11th is in your board package. Do y'all have any... On August 2nd, for the special meeting, do y'all have any amendments to that? If not, I need a motion to approve those as well.
We receive and adopt.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. All right, we're going to delegations from the public. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is y'all's time to speak to us. We are here for y'all. We just asked everybody to do it with decorum and civility, and so we can get your point across, and so we can hear with no shouting and yelling. So, anyway, first speaker tonight, Mr. Sonny Abbott. Hold for applause. Oh, that was written here. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chairman, I have something I would greatly appreciate if you'd be so kind as to give everyone a copy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
What I have distributed, and you are now holding, is a picture of 205 East Pennsylvania Avenue in Crewe. Although difficult to see, there are dugouts, a stadium, soccer fields, and two deteriorated buildings on this site. At last month's meeting, a line item was stepped over, dealing with accepting a surplus piece of property currently under the ownership of the school board. That piece of property was 205 East Pennsylvania. This board took no action, and after the August meeting, the school division had a portion surveyed to separate the two dilapidated buildings from the remaining land. This change required the school division to have the school board make a second motion to surplus this specifically cut-off area. This is the part of the street address with the two buildings. Their first motion was to surplus the entire street address, and was not repealed when the second motion was made. At the last school board meeting, I suggested both motions be repealed until a new street address is provided by the town of Crewe for the property separated by the two structures. To my knowledge, that hasn't happened. I suggest this board return the item to the school board and recommend a complete review prior to resubmitting once the motions have been repealed, specifically replacing and when both areas have separate and distinct street addresses. And I recognize that I'm asking for something that should have been fully and completely researched prior to being submitted to the county and put on the agenda. Why not make it clear and simple to avoid any confusion? I have one additional request. Will the board explain where the additional funds will be derived to cover the cost of legal services? Statements from the county's legal team is in excess of the budgeted $50,000, and there are 10 months remaining in the fiscal year. If these funds are being pulled from the surplus, or what some have called the rainy day fund, or the golden goose fund, or the LRA, please provide an estimate number to cover these pending legal costs. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Board members, does anybody have any questions or needs of clarification from Mr. Abbott before he steps away from the podium? Okay. And Mr. Abbott, I think I can secure one thing for you here. The LRA is completely separate from the county now, so there should be no funds being transferred back and forth to cover costs to the county. That should stay specifically in the LRA fund, but we will follow up. Staff and I will follow up with you on this and get some clarification for you, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You got my sheet? Quit hiding the papers up here. All right, I'm sorry. How you doing? Good.
I'm gonna do my best to get through this.
Take your time.
My name is Deborah Ostrander. On Tuesday, September 12th, my life changed in a matter of minutes. I was at Liberty Baptist Church waiting for my kids to get off the bus when I was robbed at Gunpoint.
Ms. Ostrander, can I... I dreadfully apologize. Can I get that microphone raised up for you? Buddy, if you don't mind, that thing will pop out of its hook right there. I'm sorry.
Do I need to start over?
No, ma'am. You do not. I apologize for my oversight there, not seeing that up in the air for you there.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was born and raised in Notaway County. I know most of these areas like the back of my hand. Growing up, we were never heard of the drug and crime problems like they are now. I have three young children, they are my world, but I'm terrified of the world they're growing up in. The citizens of Bible Road have been living a nightmare for years. A known drug house on their road, meth addicts walking the street, and property being stolen. What is it going to take to get these problems taken care of? I was taught and brought up to respect police and authority figures throughout the last couple of years. The respect is still there. I'm disappointed at the same time. I'm angry. What if Tuesday that man would have decided to pull the trigger? What if my kids would have pulled up on the bus and seen that? I ask the board to take a minute, think of your families, your kids, your spouse. My life changed in a matter of minutes. My parents would have had to have buried their child. My children would have had lost their mother. I would have never even got the chance to grow... Watch them grow up, graduate, get married, have kids of their own. I wouldn't have had the chance to grow up with my husband, all the milestones and memories I would have missed. What if it was your wife, husband, son, or daughter? The citizens of Notaway deserve better. Do better. When will enough be enough? Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ostrander, if you don't mind, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Ostrander?
Deborah, sorry that happened to you.
Very sorry. Thank you for coming up and sharing with us.
Mr. Edgar Benton.
We're here. Just trying to stay calm.
Yes, sir. Take your time.
My name is Edgar Benton. On September 12th, my wife was robbed at Gunpoint at Liberty Baptist Church on Bible Road. The drug and crime issue in this county, especially on that road, has been going on for years. Channel 6 has come out here and done coverage on that road. And, I mean, I was just going to read what I had wrote, but I don't want to speak from the heart and stuff of that. My personal opinion, I feel like the Sheriff's Department in this county is not doing enough for the drug usage, all of the things that are going on on that road, EMS going out because of people overdosing, using Narcan. It was a young man on that road that just died within the last year or so from an overdose. And what bothers me the most is the Code Red system. That is for emergencies in this county. This county, we paid for that, correct? So how come that couldn't have been issued to let people in that area know, to look out for somebody on Deep Creek when that is where the suspect fled? I mean, there's a deputy that lives at the other end of that road. I know that because I see him go in his driveway all the time. You know, and I'm like my wife. I was born and raised a mile from here on this road. I've been in the county pretty much my whole life. I've always respected law enforcement and everything else, but there's a time when enough's enough. And I should have been in here before now, when people were getting robbed over there and everything else, and spoke my opinion. But I wasn't, and luckily, my wife is still alive.
Amen.
That's right.
I guess my biggest question is for the sheriff, because he's the one that handles the Code Red. Why was it not used?
Well, why don't you finish, sir?
I'm finished on that. That's my last question.
Okay, well, sir, I don't know if this is out of order. May I?
Yes, sir.
We were all out there that day. It was a number of us out there, and we were up and down that road. Again, that area has a Facebook page, and they had information throughout that neighborhood. We were talking to people up and down the road, they were already out in their yard looking, when we got there. That's why we're there.
So how did they find out? Within 12 minutes, your officers were found.
Now, that's a good question. Again, that Facebook page, that community talks. That community talks.
But you're telling me that if you would have issued the Code Red or whoever in your office, I don't know exactly who it is.
I didn't call for the Code Red. I didn't call...
But if it would have been, was there a chance the deputy and others in the room... Now, I don't know if he was going to do it or not. I have not had a chance to speak to him yet. I will.
Okay.
But what's the chance of maybe if he was off duty and at home and got that Code Red alert, he could have come right out of there? Then, no matter what, either she would have been able to see who come out of the room on the vehicle, or he could have. Or anybody else on that road.
Anything can happen like that.
Mr. Benton, Sheriff, if...
He wasn't talking for us.
I understand, and this is a little bit out of the norm, that we normally do this, and I understand. That's the reason why I'm giving a little latitude here. May I suggest, could Mr. Hyde, myself, and the sheriff potentially meet with you to discuss your concerns?
Yes, sir.
Would you be amenable to that?
Yeah.
Okay. One of us will get... I've got your information here, and one of us will definitely get in contact with you to see if we can't close any gaps or catch anything where there may have been an error on our part, or additional funding that we need to look at too, or any type of procedure or thing, but we want to make sure everybody feels safe, number one. And I think this may be a good way to bridge that. But also, did you have any other statements that you wanted to read to the board?
I've said my piece. I've said what I need to say.
Okay. All right. So, board members, did y'all have any clarifications that you need?
No, just sorry about that area. So sorry. And hopefully, something can be done with that area.
Okay. We'll get this meeting set up as soon as possible and see if we can't come to a resolution for you. And again, we're dreadfully sorry what has happened to you. It's god-awful. So...
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir.
You too, Dave.
Mr. Hawthorne Jr.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Puts things in perspective a little bit. And I'm enjoying the feedback that the board's given. I think that's a nice development. And moving you to the center, now, Dickie's kind of a lateral move as far as speed. I've heard that women never look better than when they're next to ugly men. Helen, you'll never look pretty.
Flattery will get you nowhere.
I don't know what the hell I can have them or not.
All right, well, thank you all. Good evening. I am Robert Hawthorne Jr. I'm still a local farmer and attorney. I was... Own both a house in the town of Blackstone and a commercial building in that same town that houses two businesses. I have educated kids in this county for a combined total of 75 years. My siblings and myself went to school here for a combined total of more than 20 years. Various family members have held employment in this county for decades' worth of time. And I have coached rec ball here for many years, now somewhat a past afterlife, but I've patronized businesses here for my entire life, and a large percentage of my clientele resides in this county. So I'm not coming to you tonight, as I have in the past, as an attorney for a landowner for or against a project, or as the lawyer for a solar developer, or for a local business that's looking to benefit from a solar project. And for those of you who like to keep track of these things, I'm not here on anyone else's nickel. I'm here on my own behalf. No one is paying me to be here tonight. Instead, I'm coming to you as your friend and fellow Notaway County taxpayer, who is concerned about the future of this county. I'm concerned about the county, and I'm concerned for the county's taxpayers. Notaway County is staring down the barrel of an immediate financial challenge that, according to your own financial planners, are going to introduce those challenges, a tidal wave of debt service in the next few years. These obligations include a new emergency management system, a new animal shelter, a new courthouse complex. Not a courthouse, mind you, a courthouse complex, as well as new and/or completely remodeled or overhauled schools. This is going to introduce a large amount of debt, and if the way the animal shelter has gone is any indication, we have better brace for a huge financial hit. In this county, under the new land assessments, it takes to raise $2 to $3 million of additional revenue needed for debt service that's looming, that's coming very soon. Again, according to your own financial planners, you have to basically raise taxes the equivalent of 23 cents per hundred on our real property taxes to meet 3 million in additional revenues. We're either need to go into... We are either need to have new revenues, or we might have to seriously raise taxes. And I vote for new revenues. For the... For many years now, six years, I guess, I have watched this county struggle, this board struggle, with charting any definite course to solve, to decide solar's place in the county. I watched this board, two years ago, take their time to deliberate and craft a solar ordinance with the assistance of solar experts who, in the form of county planners and administrators, brought veteran experience to the task. I then listened to this board promise that it would replace the old ordinance with the new one, for which it had invested a lot of time and money to craft. Then I watched as the old ordinance was repealed nearly two years ago, and today, we stand no closer to a sensible course of action on solar than we did in 2017. And now I hear that a small handful of opponents to a particular proposed solar project, a project that never even reached the application stage, with singleness of purpose and with disregard for the best interest of this county, are compacting a revamped new solar ordinance overhaul that is so outside the bounds of common sense that it is essentially a ban on all solar projects in Notaway County. These folks apparently purport to know something that Brunswick, Amelia, Lunenburg, Prince Edward, Buckingham, Mecklenburg, Sussex, and scores of other counties and municipalities do not, since all of them have embraced the benefits of commercial solar to some significant degree. Unfortunately, in getting to that point, this board has been subjected to a barrage of negative comments from anti-solar, from a small group of anti-solar partisans, that nearly in their entirety, these comments are not factual or are granted some kind of credence without a mere inquiry from you. Most of their assertions are designed to cause fear without fact. I think now is the perfect time for Notaway to take a deep breath on this issue and have a true debate about what solar projects can or cannot do for our county. I am here to invite anyone to take me up on that offer. I'll be happy to get us started, and I will promise to back my assertions with facts, and I will listen to my opponents with respect, and I will ask them to do the same. And then I will ask all five of you, and those who are going to occupy some of these seats in the near future, to exercise your fiduciary duty to listen to, deliberate, and determine the facts for yourselves, and then make decisions that are in the best interest of this entire county and its citizens. I appreciate your time. I'll be back next month to renew the debate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all want to lean on me, chew on me, if there's anything?
Y'all have anything, y'all?
Uh-uh. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hawthorne.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Norton, before you start, do you mind turning that mic back to you? There we go. Thank you, Ms. Hyde.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board.
Good evening.
And Mr. Administrator. I ask you tonight, with as much transparency as possible, for clarification for the citizens of the county that could be dramatically impacted by the proposed Commonwealth water line from Sandy River Reservoir to the Notaway State facilities. What can you share regarding where the board is as far as negotiations with the town of Crewe, the state, or other entities to develop a plan of action, noting that that action need be swift, as we already see a public hearing announcement? Since the forum Tuesday night, many District 3 citizens have approached me and expressed concern, saying their representative has not been forthcoming with information on the potentially devastating matter to the citizens until they read or heard the news story. I ask for a response in order to calm the fears and serve as act as damage control for everyone, as fears were generated by the unfortunate, misguided, less-than-factual front-page news story in the Crewe Barkful Journal. The citizens and all leaders deserve a response for such critical situation that surely can be salvaged by actively engaging with all parties in the development of a positive strategy. We all certainly need to be aware that being potentially litigious with the state of Virginia is not a good position. Let's turn devastation by way of innovation to a plan that can result in transformation. And thank you all for your service.
All right. Ms. Norton, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Norton?
I think it was added to the agenda tonight. I think there'll be some discussion about it and maybe some presentation, if you'd like it.
Okay. And that was where we amended the agenda under the unfinished business, item three. Okay. Mr. Sean Davis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I hope you guys are well tonight. It's not very often that I actually have to put myself on the list and get to stand up and not react to something else that's going on. I thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Sean Davis. I am a citizen of Notaway County, citizen of the town of Crewe, and for complete transparency, I also currently sit on Town Council for the town of Crewe. I could stand here and, once again, the question just came up, and I could rehash all of the issues, the timeline, the action taken to date by the town, our partners in the county, our partners in Blackstone, but you guys have heard that quite often, as it references the water issue with the state. I don't really need to do that. I think I'll leave the official communication, because I'm here personally tonight. I'll leave the official communication to those that the Town Council elects to come converse with you guys. Speaking of the Crewe Barkful Journal, and this week's edition, as well as in the social media post, or a blog that appeared and hit everything last week, one of your members, in what can only be seen as a political grandstand maneuver, stepped out on a limb and leveled, if not allegations, innuendo, I think it was pretty clear, that the members of Town Council in Crewe, along with the remainder of you guys on this council, this board, are somehow either racist, or sexist, or both. And that's unacceptable. The allegation was made without specificity or substance, and it calls into question not only my integrity, but the integrity of my fellow council members and the other four of you sitting on this body. So I'm going to try to be specific and direct, something that others aren't able to do. I'm going to address a couple of things tonight. They all deal with Ms. Simmons. Ms. Simmons claims that she's been working on this water project for eight, nine, months, a year. That's admirable. Some of us have been working on it for three years. We've been in meetings and phone calls and conversations and more things than some of the others have been. But even if true, the solution that I have seen, or seems to be, is basically, step one, we're going to hire this law firm, $10,000 a month of taxpayers' money. Step two, problem solved. The steps that are in between those two, of what they will do, how they will do it, I deal with attorneys every day. It's what I do for a living. Usually, when you contract with a law firm, there's a scope of work. There's a list of achievable, objectives, goals, things that they're going to do for $10,000 a month. The contract that Ms. Simmons put in my hand had none of that, and I told her that at that moment. But I still went back to my counsel, because that's what I was asked to do, and I relayed to them the information that Ms. Simmons gave me, and to the person with no specifics, no scope of work, was, "We already have attorneys. We already have a law firm. We're not quite sure what this is." And the answer was, "No, we're not interested." I'm not sure that that answer was such that some wanted to hear, but that's okay. You know, that hire this law firm, problem solved. If only it was really that simple, we'd have been done with this three years ago. But it's not, and to be honest, at this point, it's irrelevant. If one goes back and reviews Ms. Simmons' position on the water issue, from the time that Prince Edward County came in this room and presented the first resolution, which would have authorized them to sell water anywhere in Notaway County, from that point is where this discussion starts. I've heard people refer to 10 years, and 12 years, and 14 years, and how that was long before the sitting council now, long before the mayor now, long before anybody sitting on this board, with the exception of perhaps Ms. Simmons and Mr. Vaughn. That Ms. Simmons sat on her hands and took a stance with another supervisor that this wasn't a county issue, this was a Crewe issue, and Crewe needed to solve it. Instead of taking a stand with the other board of supervisors members that were ready to give a solid no vote that night, it ended up getting tabled to be taken up two years later. Two years later. Fast forward to last year's redistricting, and now all of a sudden, two-thirds of the town of Crewe is now in Ms. Simmons' district. Those people in that west end of Crewe are now her people. They are now people that will depend on her to represent the town of Crewe, and all of a sudden now, Ms. Simmons wants to be the hero. Ms. Simmons got... Ms. Simmons got a law firm at $10,000 a month, can't tell us what they're going to do, but she got them. And they're here. A complete change in position based on who was in her district. I've said in the Water Task Force meetings, almost every one of them that occurred over the last year and a half, nothing offered, nothing gained, stone-faced, while we tried to figure out a solution to a generational problem that was occurring in this county. There are still people in this county that ask the question. They have no idea of the impact of this water system, none, none whatsoever, especially to the people that live in the Town and Crew, but not just to the people of the Town and Crew, to every single one of your constituents. Because if the Town and Crew ceases to exist, it's not a crew problem anymore. Guess whose problem it is? It's y'all's problem. It's taxpayers' problem. Streets, water, sewer, police department, everything that it takes to operate a municipality becomes a new thing for this Board of Supervisors. But hopefully, we won't get to that. To have a sitting elected official accuse me or my colleagues of making decisions based on race or based on sex with nothing to back that up is not only crossing the line of an elected official, it's a personal insult to me. Anybody that knows me, knows my family, my kids, Mr. Vaughn, you've known me for 40 years.
That's right.
Your boy and I were best friends for a long time. My daughters are evidence that I'm not a racist. But it didn't matter, because it's political hoopla, and we can put it on the front page of the paper, and we can fail to show up for the candidates for them. We don't have to answer to anybody in public, because it's easier that way. Well, we're going to answer it tonight. You're going to answer it at some point, because you're either going to show where I was a racist and/or sexist. By the way, from the sexist thing, one term ago, the Town and Crew was a woman-majority Town Council, probably the first one in South Side, Virginia, ever. We still have three ladies sitting on our council that make great decisions and great input every single time we meet. So on their behalf, I take offense to that, too. The decisions we made were about being good stewards of taxpayer money. There's no way that I could convince my council to look at the people of the Town and Crew and say, "In the situation that we're in, it was a wise idea to drop $120,000 a year on legal representation," and she still can't answer the question then, or couldn't answer the question then, I've asked her again since that time, and she can't answer it tonight. It's a very simple question, it's one word, "How?" How are you going to help us? Are you going to do something that our law firm, and our lobbying group, and our PR firm can't do? I just, I don't have a problem with somebody being disappointed about the outcome of a project that they feel that they've worked on. I get that. It's understandable. But to level blame in the front of a newspaper, or on a blog, or an interview, and lay it at the feet of people that have done nothing but worked nonstop for three years trying to solve a problem that probably doesn't have a solution, that's disingenuous at best, and again, insulting at worst. If anybody here wants to have a conversation about what's really going on during this water process, Mr. Rourke is well-versed, Mr. Van Orbeek is more than well-versed, you can call me anytime you want to, and I'll make myself available, and we can have a discussion, but we're going to have that discussion based on fact, not fiction. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time this evening. I hope that there's never another reason that I have to come back down here and actually sign up to talk, but I appreciate your time, and thank you for the gracious reception. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis? Okay. Mr. Slugger Morset. How you doing, Ms. Morset?
I'm doing all right. How about you? You doing okay?
So far, and look, last time you were here, you momma, we had the delegation from the public, and then we went into a public hearing. I found where you were assigned, it was on the third public hearing, so we have that document, and, you know, so next time, we'll try to make sure that we got public hearings separated with delegations from the public.
That's no problem.
Okay.
Just a little 50 miles out of the way. First of all, I want to tell you, I really, really appreciate y'all getting Phillip here. Full disclosure, Phillip and I have been friends for 20 years, put us in a room together. We'd be fighting like cats and cats in about 10 minutes, but we care for each other, and so I'm glad. In fact, I called him a few months back, and I told him I could see what was getting ready to happen, and I said, "Phillip, please, whatever you do, take that job." And I can tell y'all this much, if y'all can get Phillip for $225,000 a year, that's not plugging him. I'm telling you the honest truth, you cannot, you will never beat that deal. I don't know what he'll work for, or whatever y'all, but I can tell you, I get into other counties, and I deal with 17 different counties, from one thing to another, y'all, if y'all can buy his contract from Blackstone, do it. That being said, him and I'll get fighting in about hour. But anyway, I have decided I'm going to probably, in this law case, I'm going to probably go along with vacating these properties and so forth, but I just wanted you to know that, from my perspective, I didn't do anything wrong, and one reason I didn't, and I haven't shown anyone this, but, so I'm going to read it to you. I received a letter on February the 6th, 2019, from County Attorney Preston Williams, stating I had failed to get subdivision approval, and the county would not grant a building permit until the subdivision was approved. This is the lots out on 609. I received a building permit signed by Dean Lewis, and a zoning permit signed by claiming to be zoning administrator Ronnie Rourke, both dated nine months after this letter. The fact that these permits were granted completely exonerates me, involving the failure to have this 2016 subdivision approved. This means the county should pay my attorney's fees, although the Virginia Supreme Court case, also the Virginia Supreme Court case shows that the code I'm being accused of violating is a toothless tiger, and this case also completely exonerates me, so I'd appreciate it if you folks would read it. I brought you a copy of it, but y'all will have to share it. Anyway, this case basically says that you can sell your lot because you have inalienable property rights. You can sell your lots without approval. Now, I want you to read that case, so you'll know it, but I'm just telling you that because it's not profitable for me to continue this, continue this war and these problems. So I don't want y'all to think that I'm being hard to deal with, just wanted you to know my side of it before we complete it.
Yes, sir.
Another issue that this, between you and I, John, we have discussed this issue of notice. The E part of that section says if a locality fails to give proper notice, if it's not contested in 30 days, then it can't be appealed. You and I had a discussion, and I told you that a locality and the zoning, the Board of Supervisors were different, and this addressed the locality and not the board's failure to give notice. And so, of course, we didn't agree on that subject, so I brought you a copy of a court case that explains that. So henceforth, you will know what this court case says, that they are actually different.
Yes, sir.
So other than that, and I want to thank y'all again for hiring Phillip, and with that said, I guarantee you that him and I'll be fighting before this is over, because we always do. I should have shot him when I was hunting with him accidentally, of course. Accident, you don't have accident, you know, I accidentally. So I'm going to leave these.
Please clarify that you were joking. You all on TV.
Yeah, I clarify. I said it thought. Of course, he had a deer, he killed it. When he came out in the woods, he telling me to go help him find it, and he said the deer was that wide.
All the taxidermists.
Did you say it or not?
I did.
I'm finding, we found that deer, that deer was about like this big. He didn't have me out there half the night fooling around. So anyway, I'm going to leave these with y'all, so you have a copy of this information.
Sure.
All right, to bring this to you?
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Ms. Morset. Does anybody have any questions for clarification for Ms. Morset? All right. Have a good evening, sir. Thank you, sir. Feel free to stay, or whatever it is you want to go, go scout for some deer or something. I said, go scout for deer, or, you know, find a real one with a real rack this time for Phillip. Yeah.
The crew is supposed to lie to you.
Ms. Sue Yates.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
I want to thank Shawn Davis for saying what I had in this earlier, but had to take part of it out because it went on too long, so thank you, Shawn. I stand here tonight to address the actions of Helen Simmons regarding two interviews that she recently did with Uncle Ricky in the Crew Burkeville Journal. Both had common talking points, but the most key to me are her racist comments. On a personal note, I am sick and tired of Helen Simmons using racism as an excuse for her failures and everything else. County, if you want to do this, Helen, then I don't think you should continue sitting in the leadership position you are in. In both interviews, there is inadequate, there is an inadequate attempt by you to address the recent water issues going on in our towns. You spoke to the fact that you had reached out to the law firm McGuire Woods to work for us for a price of $10,000 monthly. You claim that they are connected to the right people in high places, and you claim that these people could fix everything. But when you took this idea to the Board of Supervisors and to the Town and Crew, they rejected the idea. You claim the reason that they rejected your idea was because you are, let me quote, "a black woman."
That's exactly right, Ms. Yates.
What a despicable statement. I find this insulting to every citizen in Nottaway County.
Good.
I am so sick and tired.
Hold, hold, hold. Ms. Yates, Ms. Yates, hold up a second, hold up a second. We're not going to have any outbursts.
I'm not outbursting, she is.
No, 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 hang on, hang on. You can reclaim your time, but Board members, we are held to our rules of procedure, and decorum and civility is expected at all times. Ms. Simmons, you do have a chance to, at the end of the meeting, to have your comments, and I ask to please save them for then, please. Continue on, Ms. Yates.
I am so tired, sick and tired, of the race card being played every time you don't get your way. I have been deeply involved in the county business for going on five years now, and I have heard this hateful rhetoric come out of your mouth way too many times. Let me ask you here tonight in a public forum, how is this hateful rhetoric helping Nottaway County? How is it helping the children in Nottaway when they hear about this? What comes from your mouth is awful. On a personal note, I don't care that you had to use an outhouse as a child. I don't care what color you are. I don't care if you are a woman, and I don't care if you are a black woman. I care that you are in a leadership position and that you should be working for all the people in Nottaway County, no matter what color they are. I care that you are making good decisions for the county, but I don't think you are, and I don't think you have very often. I've been in this county for over 14 years, and it deeply saddens me to see how divided our county and our country have gotten. We are watching neighbors that have lived next door to one another begin to hate each other. We've watched businesses burn to the ground, law enforcement being killed, and so much more ugliness. As a leader, you should be bringing our county together, but no, not you, you just keep on dividing, dividing every time you spew this hateful rhetoric. The issue with you has nothing to do with the color of your skin, it has to do with you as a person, from what I see, have done almost nothing for this county over the course of 14 years. Let's talk a little about your voting record, and let me remind you that you don't only represent District Three. Your vote represents every district in this county, because the collective vote is what matters. The list of failures is long, no clean water in Sherman's district, improper funding for emergency services, wanting to shut down PSR, our crumbling county seat. What did you sit back and do, why did you sit back and do nothing to help Landon Hardy after he was sexually assaulted at school? Why weren't you the one to take up for the child that needed help? Because after all, you had experience with the school board. Instead, you voted to censure the only board member that stood up for this young man, John Rourke. Land fell constantly in the red. You voted to give former administrator Costin six-month severance pay, which cost us citizens over $90,000 to remove him. Would you like to tell everyone here tonight why you never purchased a sign, a banner, or even a business card during the election time? Why don't you tell the citizens what you said to me about not needing to do this? I challenge you to call out the names of the small group of outspoken citizens that you claim are hurting the county, and have you ever threatened any business? Lastly, you were asked what your best moments and weakest moments were while serving Nottaway County. You said your best moments was when all the supervisors were getting along. You said your weakest moments were when you were not getting along. I challenge you to these thoughts. Where do you rank nothing? Where do you rank doing nothing to help a young man that was sexually assaulted, even though you should have had the experience to do so? Where do you rank calling out a handicapped, wheelchair-bound woman by accusing her of slandering your name? She came here and begged you not to get the county to leave PSR. And in closing the whole reason I am speaking tonight, how do you think it helps all of Nottaway County for you to blame all your failures on the color of your skin and your gender? And last but not least, the Crew Burkeville Journal wrote, "I am so sick of people," she said, "I fear the future of this county where a small clique is trying to destroy so much. I care about the people in town, in the county." Helen Simmons, you can't have it both ways. What is it?
Does anybody have any clarification for Ms. Yates?
Yes, I do. Yes, please. But you have, but my story, you have taken it all out of context. I never called anybody racist.
What do you think it is when you say the reason they didn't accept your decision or your work was because you're a black woman? Yes, you did. Shawn said it best.
We're not going to speak over each other.
I'm responding now. You wanted a response?
And I'm going to respond back, or I'll wait to, or you can wait for your comments at the end.
Well, she's not going to respond back to me, so she can sit down.
Yes, sir. Ma'am.
All right. All right, one of these last three, I tell everybody, I usually do at the beginning of the meeting, I'm going to butcher one or all of your names, I promise you. Is this Esther Reckelman?
That was her.
All right. You know, I think, I believe I said that before when you were here, didn't I?
I was not speaking here before, but there was another lady, maybe.
Okay, all right.
Chairman Rourke, members of the board, my name is Esther Reckelman, that's how it's pronounced.
Okay.
And I'm a project developer at Hexagon Energy, which is based out of Charlottesville. I am not a citizen of Nottaway County, but I've had the privilege of being a guest here as for the last few years, I've been trying to develop a solar facility out near Burkeville, owned by two lovely people who have been lifelong residents of Nottaway County. Over the last few months, as the county has been working diligently to pass a new comprehensive plan and are now drafting up a new ordinance, I'm here before you today with some information to urge you to reconsider the restrictive requirements you are looking to include in your ordinance. First and foremost, I sat in on the zoning ordinance committee this past Tuesday and was able to take a look at the setback requirements that are being proposed for solar facilities. As proposed right now, they would include 800-foot setbacks from roads and right-of-ways, 500 feet from adjacent property lines, and 1,500 feet from habitable dwellings, among others. I asked one of the engineers in my office to do a quick analysis of how large a property would need to be in order to accommodate, let's say, 25 acres of buildable land. You could see that on the first page of the documents that I gave you. The reason we use 25 buildable acres is because that is how much land you need to accommodate a three-megawatt facility, which is the average size of a community-scale solar project you see today. The minimum property size required to host a community-scale solar project and accommodate all setback requirements, assuming that, in my example, I said that there were going to be one side of the property abutting a road, and let's say, three other sides abutting other properties, that property would need to then be 110 acres to suit a 25-acre facility. That does not include if there is some sort of habitable dwelling next to the property, if there's any other constraints such as topography or wetlands. It also doesn't consider that most properties in the area are not a perfect rectangle, unfortunately, and we likely need to have larger sites to accommodate even just a 25-acre facility. My team and I decided to take it a step further and build a model showing how all of the constraints proposed in the ordinance will affect usable and buildable area in the county, so that's the next three maps that you see in your packet. In the first map, some of the assumptions we decided to build in In the first map, some of the assumptions we decided to build into this were that buildable area need to be at least 25 acres contiguous acres or more. We also decided to add an extra 100-foot buffer away from all wetlands, since that is a requirement that is put forth by the Department of Environmental Quality. And we also included all other setback requirements, such as the 800 feet from roads, 500 feet from other properties and such. The first map you see shows in yellow all properties that have at least 25 contiguous usable acres. If you flip to the next page, you'll see a map outlining all of those same properties, but with federally-owned property and state-owned property subtracted from that. And then the last map, which I think is the most important, in my opinion, shows all properties with 25 or more usable acres that are located within Dominion Energy Service territory. The reason I highlight that this is important is because Dominion Energy has a large appetite for small-scale solar, while co-ops and smaller utilities aren't held to the same requirements that Dominion has for putting renewables on the grid. For this reason, most developers opt to use property in Dominion territory for their work. If we cut down the data set to Dominion territory, we are left with eight properties in total in the county that have enough potential areas, so 25 acres, for us to develop a project on and meet all of the above criteria. Again, that's only eight properties. And that number will only go down because that is not accounting for undiscovered wetlands, topographic issues with a site, and, most importantly, proximity to appropriate electrical lines and infrastructure, which very frequently kills projects. All that to say, the way the ordinance is written now in the draft form will effectively ban solar in the county. No developers will likely find any appropriate land to develop on here. I want to urge you to consider less restrictive setbacks. By imposing such restrictive ordinances, you're limiting yourself to only eight sites in the county that are developable for the community-scale solar projects that you want to have here. By lessening the requirements, you increase the number of properties available, therefore allowing the county to choose which property is best, not only for a solar project, but also for county development. It allows you to really have more awareness as to whether the sites are truly good for solar, and they're not just cut down to the eight that you are forced to work with within the county. I hope you could take me out, take me up on this information, and consider opening up lines of communication with developers, and I thank you for your time tonight.
Okay. All right. Ms. Reckelman, I do have a quick question for you, if you don't mind. On the first map, where the usable area does include the government-owned land, was any of these yellow areas identified as being owned by Notaway County?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I can look into it and let you know, to be honest. Are you talking about the bottom right?
Yes, ma'am, this area in here.
I assume that is near Fort Pickett?
Fort Barfoot, now.
Fort Barfoot, yeah. I'll look into that, and I'm happy to email you and let you know what I find out.
Because the county owns over 1,000 acres out there.
Okay.
And it's, there's a transmission line did it, and right across the street from the property lines there. And also, I may suggest, the planning commission meetings, sometimes if you may want to reach out to the planning commission, Mr. Ingram is the board's representative on the planning commission, maybe that some of this information you may want to present to them as well.
Sure, I'll definitely consider that. And I also want to, I do want to highlight that none of the, none of the Notaway-owned property that is in the southeast is in Dominion territory. So, just what I wanted to highlight about how the appetite for community solar projects really only remains in Dominion Service territory, which is why developers like myself opt to work there, because really, co-ops and smaller utilities don't, aren't really interested in these projects.
Okay.
But, any other questions?
Anybody else have anything?
Uh-uh.
All right.
All right.
Well, that's it for now. So, thank you, appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and, you know, I'm sure if, if you can get in touch with the planning commission or, and he is well-versed in the solar and what the ordinance is maybe headed towards, so he'd be a good resource to keep in contact with as well, if you like.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rourke.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Christina Colazo. I said Colazo, it's Colazo, is that correct? Colazo. Thank you, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here today to briefly speak on behalf of Notaway Lane's bowling alley. I know we've been the topic of a lot of conversation, good and bad, specifically in this room and via social media. But I'm here to say, regardless of anything being said, that we are a very friendly, welcoming facility that wants to cater to all members of the community. We consist of a very friendly and also welcoming staff that would love to give each of you the opportunity personally to show your families what we are and what we stand for. Like I said, just a brief statement. With that being said, I would love if my manager would have the opportunity to speak next. Thank you for your time.
Oh, are you Ivana?
Inara Kishwani.
I'm sorry, it looked like a V. Inara Kishwani. Okay, because I was going to say, okay, yes, you are signed up, so yes, you can speak. Absolutely.
Sorry, it's a tough name. Good evening, everybody. I'm Inara Kishwani. I'm here on behalf of Notaway Lane's Bowling Alley, and I would like to, we would like to invite all of you to come to the bowling alley personally, and we would like to offer every single one of you a voucher that will include two hours of bowling and a free meal on us. And you should just come see us, see for yourself. I'm so sorry for everything. Yeah, that's all I want to say.
Well, actually, I'm going to say no to that because you should not have to feel like that you have to give us anything free for us to come visit your facility.
No, this is an apology for the entire town, like, you know, all the social media. We just wanted to come and say that we are very welcoming people. You guys should come here for, like, you know, come see for yourself.
And I don't doubt that. The gentleman that we had a conversation with was, was very professional, and I think if, on behalf of the board, now, I'm not speaking for all, but I think, I think respectfully, the, if y'all wanted to do like a discount or something at the door on a specific night or something, instead of doing this and the cost that y'all may incur for this for us, I say give it to the people. Give it to the people, I think they'd be more appreciative of it.
We are actually going around in schools and giving it to kids to come and, like, you know, come see us. It only has two hours of bowling, this is actually not going to hurt us. We would actually appreciate if you guys can have it, and everybody in this room, we'll offer it to everybody in this room.
Okay, well, yeah, like I said, as far as gifting a voucher, for me, I would say no, simply because the whiff of impropriety that they, that someone may have with that, but that is not going to stop me from coming to visit y'all's establishment. My wife and I have bowled in there before. Unfortunately, I'm in a medical situation right now, and I can't get my soul overexerted. But me and Mr. Vaughn will probably, when he resigns...
...pray to bowl against me.
Yeah. Me and him gonna have a competition. So, we coming, but we don't want it to be at y'all's expense by any means. So, it is a wonderful gesture, and we already knew the heartfelt apology that was sent to us previously, and it was, it was well-received, it was well-presented, and we wish you nothing but well moving forward. But this is not by any means necessary for us.
Also, I want to make a promise to everybody in this room. We will make sure we do family-friendly entertainment from now on.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's, and that's what I said, you know, as, as, as we learn together, we will grow together, and that is for sure.
If there is anything that you guys would want, we are very open to everybody's opinions. We take them very seriously, we will take it into consideration. If you want to have something at the bowling alley, something different, something new, we are open to that.
Okay.
Because this is like everybody's first bowling alley as business partners, so I would really appreciate, like, you know, if everybody just looked on the bright side.
Right, yes, and we will, and anything can be misconstrued or even labeled a mistake, and we learn from it. That's the biggest thing, and Notaway's a very forgiving community. It really is.
I really appreciate that.
A very accepting community, and I think you'll see that. There may be ebbs and flows in business and bumps in the road, but Notaway's a good place to be, and we're glad to have y'all to provide that entertainment out there for the family.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we still doing the vouchers?
No.
Anybody?
Give them to the audience.
Yeah. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that does it for the delegation for the public, so we will get on to our agenda, the public hearing for the rezoning. Greg Zodi.
This part of my presentation.
Okay.
Good evening. This is a conditional rezoning request for tax map number 43-84. This is located at 1744 Cox Road. It's east of Blackstone. Currently, the situation we have is that we have, on the north and south side of Cox Road, we have a general business strip that's approximately 500 feet deep. South of those, on the south side of Cox Road where their site is located, it becomes rural residential. On the north side, behind the general business swath, I'll call it swath, it's conservation residential. So, the predominant land use between town limits and going out to the overpass is single-family residential. Now, the glitch in our zoning ordinance is that we currently do not have any provisions to allow pre-existing nonconforming uses or structures can rebuild in the, in the event of a fire or whatnot, or they cannot expand. That's just exacerbating the pre-existing nonconforming conditions. So, the request was made to staff, and I went out and, as, per my report, you can see the various businesses. There's about seven, I'm guessing about seven businesses short of the old lumberyard on Cox Road. So, we have City Custom Cycles, we have the Vet Clinic, we have the Tri-County, and that's not a business, that's a fraternal organization, Tri-County Eagles, then McMillan Funeral Home, Exxon, and then the old Williamson site across the road, and I think that's it for that stretch. All the adjacent properties I mentioned earlier is general business. The current use on the site is a single-family home, and the reason for the rezone is that part of it, the very southern part of this parcel, is zone rural residential. So, the applicant is seeking to sell the property, and in order to do that, they would need to go to rural residential. So, in the case that they want to expand it or the structure burns down, then they can rebuild it as a rural residential unit. So, at this point, I did include the land use map. It is a general business, it's general business for that area. One of my arguments, I don't want to say arguments, one of my points of contention is the fact that we have no water or sewer running down there, and it's going to be hard, in my opinion, to develop. We have a site on the south side of Cox Road that has well monitors that we cannot, we had, we went out and looked at a site a few months back, but they have three monitoring wells, I think. So, the water, there are issues with the water. So, I honestly, as a planner, and from an economic development perspective, we need to provide infrastructure, whether that's now or 10 years down the road, that has to be done. But until then, we're going to continue, I would think, to see these type of situations where people want to sell their house or expand it or something and bring, increase the value of it. So, I have, I would like to talk to you all, and I'll talk to the zoning ordinance committee next month about this, but I'd like to have, I've created ordinances before where you can have an existing structure home as an allowable use, but once that use goes, it goes, and you have general business. Because I don't want to see rezoning of everything down there to rural residential. This is a case that came before me. I think it meets a reasonable standard to be rezoned, and I do want to let you know that the planning commission heard this Tuesday night and voted unanimously to forward a positive recommendation. And I believe Mr. Walden's here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. All right. Was that all you had for now, Mr. Zodi?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Y'all got any questions for Greg at this point? All right, so we need to open the public hearing? All right, I need a motion to open the public hearing for the rezoning of the Blackstone Rental Properties LLC.
So, I move.
So, I can...
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone to speak for or against this tonight? Just let me see your hand at this point. Anyone who wants to speak for or against? All right, board members, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move.
All right, Mr. Vaughn, I got your second there. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public's hearing is closed for the Rosetta Blackstone Rentals LLC. All right, what's your, what's your, what's your favor here, board members? I know you were at that meeting.
You know, I think, from what I understand, we really need to do this because of the fact the homes there, and if a home were to burn down, they couldn't rebuild. So, I mean, I don't think it would be a problem as far as, you know, going ahead and I'll move that we approve this request.
Okay. All right, I got Mr. Vaughn's second on Mr. Ingram's motion to approve this request. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go, you got that taken care of. The next public hearing is for the school budget amendment, and that's probably why all these folks from the school system's here tonight. Y'all want some money? Yeah, look at, all right. All right. All right, board members, y'all have the information in front of you about exactly what the school budget amendment is. My thing is not operating here. The amount, that's the total appropriations here, right?
For this particular one, it's $584,763.77.
Okay. All right, do we need to do a public hearing on each one of these individually or just both of them together?
Would the public hearing advertised in a particular fashion?
It's just budget, school budget amendment as a singular. So...
I would make two motions, specific motions on this. No, I would not combine them together. I would make a specific...
Okay. All right, board members, I need a motion to open the public hearing for the request that totals $584,763.77.
I move, so move.
All right, I got Mr. Vaughn for the second over there. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we had a public hearing for this item here, which is number Is there anyone to speak for or against this budget amendment to the school system? I see Mr. Abbott.
Well, I have a question first.
Sure.
The posting in the newspaper is different than what you just declared. It shows the total of $693,905.47.
There are, there are two appropriations, and the total is the exact amount in the advertising.
The second one on the public hearing is 109, 141...
But there's more than one public hearing?
Yes, because it says amendment.
We'd have to do them separately for clarification purposes, but the two combined do indeed equal the amount that was...
Well, you, y'all can figure out, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, y'all can figure out how to divide up what I'm about to say then.
Okay.
Has this board been given a clear explanation as to why nearly $694,000 is being asked to be carried over into the current fiscal year from the last fiscal year, the '22-'23 year? Other than the generic description listed in the courier record, and it is rather generic, how were these items or savings generated? Surely, this board can share with us which of these line items are allowed to be carried forward by the Code of Virginia, and which of these items are from what source? Were they from federal monies, the Commonwealth, or the local effort and match? And must be granted permission to be moved into this current fiscal year? More specifically, has the board been informed which of these items are remainders of grants or if these funds are from what I'll call traditional expenses provided for by those same federal, state, and local appropriations? Has this board asked if any of these monies have been committed prior to this public hearing? Please, and I say that again, please, don't misconstrue my questions to suggest wrongdoing, lack of need, or... to suggest wrongdoing, lack of need, or anything similar. Six hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred dollars isn't a drop in the bucket. And I believe transparency is necessary and required. Please note that I respectfully asked similar questions last week at the school board meeting. Didn't get a response. Hopefully, this board will see its way clear to ensure real, unadulterated transparency is the rule of the day. Thank you.
Anybody got any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Abbott. All right. Is there anybody else to speak for or against? All right. Board members, I need a motion to close the KG, I'm sorry, twenty-four KG O three for the amount of five eighty-four, seven sixty-three dot and seventy-seven cents. All right. We got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Public hearing is closed. So...
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a problem that we're conducting public hearings contradicting the advertisement, the way we advertise it? Does that...
Well, I'll be honest with you, Sonny, for your knowledge, I wasn't aware how it was advertised. We don't have it included in our board packet, and I didn't know if there were two public hearings or one public hearing. And to be safe, we were going to have the two public hearings. But the two together, well, I don't have it in the packet, or I haven't seen that. But if you'd like to have the one public hearing, or have two actions, but I think you've closed one, so I think if you're going to handle both matters, I think you need to have both. But the effect is, you're having public hearings on the full amount, the full dollar figures that are before you tonight.
Does that satisfy your concerns, or do you want to...
I don't know. I just ask it to create a problem. I don't know the answer.
Right.
I'm relying on somebody else.
I don't think you have a legal issue forthright. Transparency, the two together, but I did not have the advertisement, nor did I do the advertisement, nor was aware of how it was advertised.
With all due respect, I take by the look that I get from our acting county administrator that responds for me, I am not a litigious person. I'm not suing anybody. Because I'm just curious as to why it's published this way, and we only did a smaller part.
Sonny, Sonny, it's on me. I didn't, it's not included in the board packet.
It's beyond you if you choose to have it that way. I would prefer that we're, if I were sitting up there making one of those decisions, that you take the total and don't do a separate, because I'll just have to say ditto to the words. Because my concerns are what I said out loud. When you look at the way it's said in here, it talks about salaries, fringes, purchase services, materials, contract services, community school grants. So, there, there seems to me to be a mixture of grant money and what I call traditional expenses. I would fully expect you to give all this money to the school. I'm not here to try to get you to stop it. I'm trying to, I'm here to try to get you to explain it, because I didn't get an explanation from the school board.
Okay. Yeah. Well, and that's what, I do have, and we'll make a decision on this in just a second. If we can...
Well, we closed the public hearing on this.
That's right. On this one.
What I'm saying is, can we have another public, we don't have to vote on the public hearing, do we?
No.
Well, then, why don't we just have one public hearing, open up another public hearing for the total amount?
All right. But tech, because...
Because it's the way it was advertised.
That's the way it's advertised.
Right. Because technically, when you, any public hearing must be advertised.
That's what I'm saying. Well, it's advertised for the total amount, so why can't we just open a public hearing for the total amount that was advertised in the paper? And I will move that we open a public hearing for the total amount that was advertised in the paper.
All right. Hold your thought right there real quick.
I got it.
Okay. All right. I think since we, we moved and opened and closed that, that first one, I think we need a motion to repeal that public hearing.
Well, then, right, you're right, the public hearing.
Yeah. So, all right. What I would need is a motion to repeal any and all discussion from item twenty-four dash KG O three, public hearing for the amount of five hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I so move.
Can I get a, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Board members.
I move that we open the public hearing.
I need that total amount.
On the total amount.
There you go.
Advertised in the paper. What was it, Mr. Abbott?
Six...
Six hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and forty-seven cents.
That a mail.
All right. Can we get a second?
Mr. Vaughn's second.
All right. Okay. All in favor to open the public hearing in the amount of six hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred five dollars and forty-seven cents as advertised as total in the newspaper, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing's open.
Put that add in the paper.
It don't count if you don't say it at the podium. No. So, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, sorry for the confusion here. My apologies. That's, that's on me. Anybody to speak for or against this at this point? Okay. Board members, I need a motion to close the public hearing. All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The public hearing is now closed. Does anybody have any questions? And I'm assuming that the school is willing to take any questions we may have. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Martin, Mr. Rowe, or Ms. Meyer?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Abbott made some good points. I think we should have an understanding, just if you don't mind, an explanation of the sources of these funds and...
I concur. Yeah. I was writing some of it down.
Looks like it's all carryover.
Right. However...
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
Do we...
So, one of these funds that are, that carryover is one of Dr. Martin's grants, and that's the communities and schools. Everything else is state money that we are allowed to carry over. Every June, they, you know, update the articles, and they give us a list of things that we're allowed to carry over if there's funds left over. This year, they included basic aid. That was a new thing that they have not included years past. So, Dr. Martin can speak to the communities and school grant, but the state money is mostly materials and supplies and purchase services. I think the only one that actually had a salary to it was the communities and schools grant. But some of the stuff from the state money, we actually carried over two different basic aids. Originally, when I did the original, I estimated we'd only have seventy-four thousand left. And June came, we got a little extra money we weren't expecting. So, that's why there's a second amendment for an additional hundred and nine thousand. And that, I mean, that comes from salary savings, from just not having bill positions this year. Other than that, there's infrastructure operations. It's about two hundred fifty thousand that was carried over. There again, that was another field that's lottery-funded. Lottery proceeds were up. We got a little extra money that we were not anticipating in that line. So, we were able to carry two hundred fifty thousand over. That's being carried over into a capital improvement line, since that is for operations and infrastructure. And then, all the other ones are small mentor teacher, project graduation, and Dr. Martin can kind of speak a little bit more as to what those kind of cover.
Okay. Before we get to that grant money, Ms. Meyer, how much of the local funds, how much of local funds were being carried over?
No local funds. This is all state funds that are being carried over.
All right. So, when y'all spend, do y'all spend, y'all spend local money before you spend estate?
Supposed to be local money first, state money second, and then federal money, well, most federal money is earmarked for, you know, grants.
Can I, can I share something that I was told when I got here in 2020? You know what I'm fixing to say, that previous administrator always said you spend federal, state, and local money. That's why if there's ever any carryover, it comes back to the county. So, I'm just, I'm not saying y'all are wrong. I'm just sharing what...
You actually have to spend local money first in regards to special education, because if we do not satisfy our local match with our federal grant on special education, they will pull our money from us on special education. So, it has been done opposite here, but technically, we are supposed to spend all local funds first. We are very fortunate that we typically do have carryover in some of our federal grants, so we're not touching new federal grant money prior to spending local funds. But that is a requirement with some of our grants, that you have exhausted all local funds before you start dipping into your federal funds.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And you were going to say about the grant?
Sure. I can speak to the school community grants and the project graduations. So, those are some funds that are allowed to assist with on-time graduation for the school division. Oftentimes, project graduation focuses on tutoring in the areas of algebra and English, which are two areas that students have to have in order to graduate. So, it supports tutoring. We may not exhaust all those funds every year and during the summer program, and so they have to be carried over to be used in the next school year. The school community grant was a, it was awarded late. It was awarded in March, I think, March or April. So, we weren't exactly sure as to how much carryover we would have. We knew we would have carryover, but we're unsure of how much, because that grant actually does not end until next year. So, it was kind of like a year and a half grant. And so, that's the reason why you see the carryover. And typically with grants, I think I've shared with y'all before, they have a fifteen-month period to expend the funds. However, you typically get an extra year on them. So, that's why there's always grant carryover from year to year to use those funds. And we have to do that as well, because we're only allocated about forty-some percent of our federal funds on October one, and we don't get the remainder funds. So, if we don't have it, then we don't have the money to spend, which is often tied up with salaries.
Okay. All right. So, I think that explains it, some of the questions that was about the Code of Virginia allowing the carryover clearly, and state and local grants provision.
If you may ask one question, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Marjorie, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, and I'm learning myself. It's been almost twenty years since I was in the county arena. On ADM, say you've got a seventeen-hundred ADM, or start first week of school, okay? And you spend down local money first, how do you make an accommodation at the end of the year if you're ADM at the end of March, or the first of April is twenty kids down, or forty kids down, or thirty kids below estimated ADM?
Well, that is part of the reason why we've always had this quote-unquote June dumping spend, because we've been so conservative on spending throughout the year to make sure that we don't overspend.
So, we can write that check back if we have to.
But typically, what I've seen the last couple of years, now that I'm in my third year, is we typically spend carryover that shouldn't be spent, and then we kind of pay back some of those funds at the end of the year with whatever we get from the county. Because the county typically has not started giving us money up until, well, you know, the, you know, the school fund starts going in the negative. That's when they start, you know, pitching in. Because typically, the first few months of the year, you know, carryover, EDIs, I mean, all that kind of factors out, and you don't have that. But like, school construction money, that really shouldn't be, that, that pot of money shouldn't be like eaten into and then having to be repaid at the end of the year, because, well, that's not boiling what that money went to. So, having the allocations throughout the year would be better, and would be more beneficial, and would be better for budgeting, because then you can really, truly ensure that, you know, local money is being spent appropriately where it's supposed to be spent before federal money. You can make sure that pots of money like school construction funds are saved specifically for school construction funds. And you can really just budget those line items a lot better. And then, you shouldn't have a lot of money left at the end of the year other than, you know, you don't know your true-up number until really, well, until state passes a budget and gives you what that, what they're going to final pay on your ADM. But we're paid out an ADM that's at the end of March. Whatever that number is, is what we're paid on. So, it is...
But the county's number is fixed. It doesn't modify our amount?
It, it will. If we budget ADM at, like this year, seventeen twenty-five, but we technically end at seventeen hundred, then we can reduce what you guys are required to pay, you know, there, those last quarter of the year, especially if we have final state numbers. I mean, that's really what we depend on, is the cap total from the state to tell us to the penny what your requirement is.
Well, that was the question, is if we spend all the local money down, and not proportionately with federal and state, is all the local spent by the time you get to that April first ADM designation?
The thing is to balance it month by month, really and truly based on, you know, the need of every month is to have that balance. Yeah. I wouldn't want to spend all five million dollars in the first month of, you know, quarter of the year. You know, I'd want to proportionally budget that out with the needs.
And the state's going to also, after that March date, they're going to start reducing. If we don't match what we say, you know, what it should be and what their calculations are, they'll start reducing funds to us as well.
Thank you.
Did y'all have any more questions?
No. Thank you for the explanation.
Okay. Thanks. Helps me to educate myself. Thank you. I appreciate that. Do we have, anybody want to make a motion to approve? It's six ninety-three, nine oh five, forty-seven.
So, move.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor for the carryover in the amount of six hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred five dollars and forty-five, forty-seven cents? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carryover approved. Thank y'all. All right. Departmental reports are in your, your package. Ladies and gentlemen, was there anything else from the school? Okay.
Got the MOU at some point with them?
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the boards, and Mr. Van Norbeck. Dr. Grimes is out this evening and was unable to be here, but she asked me to give you some remarks on behalf of the school system. So, we are heavily focused on attendance within the school division. And September is Attendance Awareness Month for the state. The school division, like I said, is very focused on chronic absenteeism. Last school year, thirty-two and a half percent of our students across the division were considered chronically absent, which is significant. That means that they missed more than ten percent of the school year. So, we know that attendance impacts student success and their outcomes, and often, people mix up truancy with chronic absenteeism, and they like to lump these into one pot. So, truancy counts only unexcused absences. The emphasis is on compliance with rules, and these are often associated with legal and administrative actions. They're the ones, if they're truant by the Code of Virginia, you know, involve truancy officer, it can go to court and those type of things. But chronic absenteeism, which is a bigger concern for us, counts all absences, excused, unexcused, and suspensions from the school division. Emphasize, it really emphasizes the academic and the learning impact that it has on students, and it's important to involve everyone, and has community-based positive strategies that have to be enforced with it. Some facts about absenteeism. In the first month of the school year, it can predict that poor attendance can predict what's going to happen to that child throughout the rest of the school year. And if they have missed two to four days in September, they go on to miss nearly a month of school by the end of the school year. So, if you think about August, if we started August first, two to four days in August means that they're probably going to miss about a month of school by the end of the school year. Also, it's important to note that across the nation, it has doubled since twenty-one, twenty-two, eighteen million compared to eight million before the pandemic. That's the chronic absenteeism numbers across the United States. Poor attendance can influence whether children can read proficiently by the end of third grade, or if they're going to get held back if they're not on track. By sixth grade, chronically absent students become a leading indicator that a student is going to drop out of high school if by sixth grade, they're considered chronically absent. Missing ten percent of the school year, or eighteen days, negatively affects a student's performance, and this is roughly two days a month. These are the students that often fly under the radar, because you don't get picked up with truancy, a day here, a day there, they add up. And like I said, they've missed eighteen days. So, we share this with you to emphasize the focus we're placing on student attendance at school. I can say that Nottaway County is not alone. Many schools across the state are in the same situation with chronic absenteeism. Our numbers did trend down from the year before, but they're still not where we want them to be with the kids getting back in school. And it really does take our community to jump in, to help and encourage And it really does take our community to jump in to help and encourage and promote the importance of learning. It's just not the school system alone that has to do it. We need the help of the community. And it really does take that all-in approach to encourage student success. So, you will be seeing a lot of our attendance campaigns going out, what it means, sharing it out, working with local businesses to help really promote the attendance at school this year.
Okay.
Any questions?
I have a question. Back in the day when I was teaching, there wasn't attendance policy. And if you had so many unexcused, you would fail. Is that still in effect?
So, there is attendance policy. There are parameters in place that you don't necessarily fail anymore. But you get so many days to make up your work and those type of things. But again, that goes back to unexcused absences. And what we are looked at by the state and the accountability system is chronic absenteeism, which takes in all of this.
I've heard that they've changed it, the state has changed it.
So, we do still have truancy. And those are those unexcused at five days, this happens at seven days, at 10 days, apparent meetings and all those type of things. But the accountability and the accreditation factors for us also rely on chronic absenteeism. And so, the school division is judged based on our percent of students being there or not. And so, that takes in to all things. I write a letter saying Danny didn't have to go to school. It's an excused absence. However, it's still adding into those numbers for him.
Good information, I appreciate that. Alright. Now, I know later on, I didn't know if you guys were leaving or not. We got a spot on here under new business about the MOU with you guys. If y'all, if y'all don't mind, do you have a few more minutes? Well, you can hang back if you don't mind. Thank you, greatly appreciate it. Alright, and I did miss this. I didn't see Ms. Bryant, but please for the VDOT report. And man, I am terrible with names at times, man. I apologize, man.
Aaron French.
That's right, that guy, y'all. Here to give us a VDOT report.
I may be around more often.
That's right.
Not a full boden, but good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I do have a pretty light report this evening. Following up from last month, our ride-arm long-reach tractors, they get back from the shop, they repaired. So, you should see our state crews out there doing some trimming with those tractors. We will be issuing a notice to proceed to our contract mowers for a full-width right-of-way mow. Probably be the first week of October, we'll issue that second week of October, give or take. They get a 10-day notice to proceed. They will commence that mowing throughout the county. That'll be full width, primary and secondary. In the meantime, we will be cutting site distance issues. We're addressing some right now. If the board gets complaints of any, please send them to me, I'll get them addressed promptly. We did award a new asphalt pot patching contract a couple of weeks ago. So, we will be catching up on some patching we've been lacking on all summer. We had to put a new contract out to bid and secured a new contract, catching up. And should be getting some patching in for, it gets too cold for asphalt. Last but not least, I got a quick update on the 46th Bridge Replacement Project. The length restrictions were posted on the detour route in both Nottaway and Brunswick County. Those restrict trucks to 40-foot or less to use the road. That restriction is enforceable by law. So, if we continue to see any issues out there, we will partner with the law enforcement partners.
Awesome.
That is all I have.
Alright. Y'all have any questions?
May I ask a Blackstone question?
I would do my best to facilitate.
It's still in Nottaway here, so, yeah.
Two questions. One, can, a town that maintains its own streets, and I know you may need to get it to me, can we piggyback on your state contract for the patching? If you can get back to us, that'd be great. And instead of us having to go through a full procurement for a relatively small number of patches. And two, about six months ago, I had spoken with Diana Bryant, and this does apply to the county. Town council had asked that the step-down in speed on Route 40 coming from Cambridge, coming into town, right now is 55 when you hit the town limits. And then, it stepped down gradually, 45, 35, and ultimately to 25. We made a request of VDOT that the step-down be taken care of outside the town limits. So, when somebody does hit Blackstone Town Limits, it would be at 25. Could you maybe ask Diana Bryant if there's any movement or discussion or if that's going to be possible?
Yes, sir.
And I'd appreciate it, thank you very much.
So, that's 40 coming from south into town?
40 coming in in northbound direction from Cambridge into town. It's 55 when you hit the limits, right there at Walmart. And we'd like to maybe slow her down prior to getting to the town limits.
Absolutely. On the asphalt patching contract, I will look into that. It is easier to facilitate when we put the contract out to bid. We did actually partner with another locality on this contract. They're going to piggyback off of it, but I can see what we can do about that as well.
Thank you very, very much.
I'm curious about this, right, 723 speed study, since I drive it all the time. Am I supposed to slow down if I'm going too fast?
The results, the results of the study will likely determine that.
Okay.
I do not know where that study stands off the top of my head. I can look into it.
I just saw, you know, and like I said, I'm on it all the time. And there is some speeding, but it's not me.
I can vouch for him, I get behind him quite regularly. It's painful, but no, I'm just kidding.
It's definitely not my wife. That is painful to get behind her.
So, look, just moving forward, Ms., how often will you be here so we make sure we have the agenda set correctly? Should we be switching the name out? Is she pretty much not coming back or?
She's coming back.
Okay, alright.
She's just, I don't know where, I can't remember where she was last month, to be honest. She's got some family in town this month.
Okay, alright, alright, yeah, alright. Because you said that we might see you more often. I didn't know if we needed to switch something on this. Okay, but that's fine, we'll leave it as it is.
Yeah, we'll continue to communicate. Like, I may be stepping in more in the future.
Okay, alright.
Do our best to communicate the changes.
No problem, I appreciate you, man. Alright, you too, have a safe trip back. Buddy, he both fell asleep. Do you have anything? Sure, sure. Yeah, we got a little wetness coming out here.
We'll be brief on the normal, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Van Norbeck, staffs, citizens. We do know from looking at the news that we do have potential Tropical Cyclone 16, that's the name of it. I think before we wake up in the morning, it will be called Tropical Storm Ophelia. So, they're looking at a name for the future. Just really brief, the biggest thing, and I've already posted this to Nottaway County Emergency Service Facebook page. And we've also sent it to you as well as our key decision-makers, about 70 people in Nottaway County that would be. And tomorrow, I'm going to have, I'll probably be busy tomorrow having meetings virtual with some of the key decision-makers like Public Works, VDOT, you know, just the Sheriff's Department, et cetera, et cetera, the fire departments. But the most persistent winds will be between 5:00 PM Friday tomorrow and 8:00 AM Saturday. So, it's going to be a night event. Heavy rain is going to continue through Saturday morning, but we're really concerned about the winds now. We're looking at now, where I put it yesterday, it was an inch and a half, now it's three inches. So, we're looking at, and I've also put maps out on Facebook this afternoon. So, when you go home tonight, I put these maps out. And what you'll notice is the cone. But more importantly, if you look at Farmville, it's going to get somewhere between two to three inches. And Richmond's going to get three or four. So, we're in the middle, we're going to probably get three. I wouldn't be surprised if we were four, but that's more Richmond and east. The wind gust, Farmville's going to be at 30, but Petersburg's going to be at 37. So, I'm going to guess we may get wind gust of 35, if I had to guess. But the sustained winds are what we're more concerned with, and they're going to be around 25 during this period. So, you're going to hear a lot of wind whistling when you go to bed tomorrow night. It's not going to stop. It's going to be very much, it sounded like a hurricane, but it's going to be in that 20 range. So, I feel like this is going to be a tropical storm and not a hurricane. Now, what concerns us, and we won a state call this afternoon, is this path looks just like Isabel did. But the good news is, you know, Isabel came right up over Greensville County. This one looks like it's going to shift to Suffolk. So, if the eye is coming over Tyre Water and shifts to the left a little bit, it's going to be a similar path. But the good news is, it's not a Category 1, it's not a Category 2, it's a tropical storm. So, that's going to be a difference. And we're hoping that it's not going to intensify. Do you have any questions of me?
Nope.
We'll keep you posted tomorrow.
Okay, I appreciate it, appreciate the support, thank you, buddy. Was there anything else, Greg, or were you done or?
Very quickly. Greg, we're, I'm not going to let Mr. High out short on tomorrow. Update. I just want to bring to y'all's attention really quickly. I received something from Melody Foster, I forwarded to you all, and I've got a copy for you, Supervisor Vaughn. This came this afternoon about the RDO, the Regional Economic Development Organization meeting. And by default, and also, I think also is my role as economic development. We're looking at a fundraising feasibility phase of creating this new CRC Regional Economic Development Organization. And they wanted us, including myself, to list kind of tiered people, business owners, faculty folks. Or in our case, I guess that would be South Side as well as maybe the schools. But to get people on board and just help sponsor this effort. This all relates to what I put in y'all's boxes a few weeks ago, this item.
Right.
So, I'd like to just brief you on that. The interview, if you, you all could give me one or two names each that do it for the county. But I have the sheet, I wouldn't have printed it out because the deadline, Melody's very, has a very aggressive deadline of next Tuesday.
Okay.
So, I just want to let y'all, if y'all could take the time, please, and just fill that out for me so I could give it back. Give it back, the instructions are in here.
Okay.
So.
No, thank you. Alright.
Please give a call if y'all have any questions or know anything about that. If I do have something else, but that'll come under the bad discussion.
Okay, alright.
I want to keep things germane. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank, alright, we'll move to the constitutional officers. Let's see, Sheriff, do you have anything? Okay. I did not see Ms. Rayford either. Okay. Ms. Waters, do you have anything?
No, except we have to look at the benches that currently have these stuck.
It's amazing. Yeah. You're going to have to sand it to get that off. Thank you. Alright, we're going to move forward to unfinished business here, the animal shelter update. Did either one of you have anything?
I'll do my best here. And we did open bids in the county administration office. One bid was received in Norman Construction. Norman Construction provided a bid of $3,814,000. I have spoken to Nottaway Cares folks who were there, I've spoken to Lynn a little bit about it. And one of the things that I did indicate at the meeting is I'd like to sit down, certainly with representatives from Nottaway Cares, Lynn, whoever would like to be there, and meet with Chris, our architect, and with the contractor, and perform what is called a value engineering. What are some ways that we can get the project down in cost? Better bid than last time, but it's still above, as my understanding, is still above the $2.6 or $2.7 million, which was the target. I don't know if we'll get that far. I don't know if there's a million dollars to be found. But I think it's worth the effort, and I think it's worth the discussion. As soon as I have a date with Chris. But I did authorize Chris, I think as a result of our discussion during the workshop, to go ahead and put the contractor on notice that we'd like to do that and see what things can mutually be agreed upon to try to get the cost down a little bit and then come back to the board and say, this is as good as we can do. This is the best we've got. And see if that's within the board's target price, so.
Dicky, had you been attending any of those meetings?
Yes, I have.
Okay. If you want to, Philip, I'd say y'all, if y'all want to go ahead and set that up with Lynn, Dicky, the Cares, so it's only two board members there, if y'all want to set that up, just let us know and just get us a brief back as soon as y'all can and.
If I may, on top of that, on the, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I was just going to ask you, at what point during this process, I think I understood you to say that it's up to the architect to kind of vet the contractor that made the bill, the bid.
It should be the architect's responsibility to vet the contractor for experience, similar projects, that sort of thing. And that's pretty typical in a process. We're doing the Armory in Blackstone, a good example. And indeed, architect has sat down and reviewed numbers. We actually vetted them together and did a background check, other projects that they've been involved with, federal government projects and that sort of thing. And we did it jointly.
At what point would that typically occur? Would we want that done before we sit down to do these value negotiations or?
Logically, yeah, I think that makes good sense. And if there's something there or a blumish that we don't know about or hasn't been advertised, it might be an appropriate time to find out.
Yeah, that way, you're not tying everybody's time up, he can come back with the recommendation.
You know, and Nottaway Cares, it's talked about, maybe we could get some in-kind donations from people in the, you know, in the area, businesses and so forth. And maybe that can help lower the cost if we can get that done.
While we're talking about the animal control shelter, I know one of the issues that obviously is important is the financing. That as those in the audience and the board know, we've asked Davenport to stop work on the project because of those cost of issuance issues and some other issues that I brought to attention of the board. What I would like to do, or what Davenport is requesting is a meeting to go over these items. I think they've had an epiphany of sorts. And it seems their fees are much less and much more reasonable than they had initially been projected to be. And they have asked if I could meet with them along with maybe a member of the board. If you have anybody that you have in mind that would like to do that. Their numbers are much more reasonable and in line with some of the other things that we had discussed.
I've got this right here, actually, Philip, for you, I, and David Rose to meet, so.
That's agreeable with the board? And David Rose is with Davenport and Company.
Alright, so, because I actually got like four different things here. The one earlier, the one with David, oh yeah, what's cool, okay, what's that? Alright, so, yeah, what else did you have on that?
Didn't we discuss also the fact that maybe we might finance all of that?
Correct, yes.
What I thought.
And I would like to present also an alternate proposal from the Virginia Municipal League, Virginia Association of County Financing Arm. They've given us a proposal, and I'd like to provide that to everybody, a formal engagement letter and proposal. I think we showed you some dollar figures prior to the last meeting. But I will make sure everybody has copies of those, and you can see where the numbers should be.
Right. Anything else on the animal shelter then? At this point, okay. Tyson Foods. Mr. Van Norbeck and I attended a Tyson's Food, well, I say Tyson's Food is what I put it on here. The potential of a new integrator coming in here, and it's not the full-blown integrator that we're looking for, but right now, it's for egg, egg production. This was kind of a feeler for them. They're still gathering some information. They had some slides there, the place was packed. It was, they were standing around the room with the farmers that are in there. So, there's going to be an update on that. But I just thought it's very important that the citizens know and this board know as well that all of the work that we have offered to be put in here, and we're still standing by these farmers, and that was actually mentioned at that room, that nobody beyond Nottaway has stood and tried to help these farmers the way we have at this point. So, it was good, but it's, we're nowhere near done. This is a potential. They do have Pulitz and Pete's Farm. Yeah, so, he already has Pulitz on the ground here. So, hopefully, this can get to, and they're talking about possibly doing a co-op. So, it's, Lambig, anything that you want to add on that? Okay. Alright, then the water meeting, board members, on October 12, we have a work session. If it's okay with the board, I would like to cancel that work session on October 12 and do a special call meeting. This meeting would entail an invite, and the reason why I'm doing this this far ahead is for all the three towns to notice the meeting. We're inviting all three councils into a room here with us on October 12. We're also going to be reaching out to state and federal officials. I believe that there's going to be invites to Frank Ruff, Lee Ware, the governor's office, the secretary of finance. So, if y'all are agreeable to that, that will be a special call meeting for October 12. And we'll send all that, disseminate all that information out to the councils. And of course, that meeting will be open to the public. That's one of the reasons why we want to do it here. We may, because of, depends on how much material is, there may not be any public comment. It just depends on what we, what all we need to cover. And especially if we have those other state-elected officials here. You know, you can't get them that often because, you know, there are vast ranges that they need to carry. So, if we get them here, we may not have any public discussion on that, but.
What time are you talking about?
6 o'clock, same time that we were going to do the, yes, sir, on the 12. That's the same time that we were going to do the work session. We'll just go ahead and just do a special, special call meeting if y'all are okay with that.
I'll be away.
Oh, that's right, yeah. I'll send you, I'll send you emails and updates. I'll just bother you and make sure you don't forget me. Yes, sir.
Would you be agreeable for 7:00 PM? I have two council work in Michigan.
Alright, I don't have a problem with that. Board members, do y'all have a problem? W, 7?
I don't have a problem with 7.
Okay, alright. Okay, that takes care of that. And under new business and school members, we got y'all right after this. Dividi, the amendment to the River Street Contract. Dividi, the amendment to the River Street contract, Mr. Zodi.
Thank you, Chair. Board members, this is basically a recitation of the original amendment that was signed last year, in twenty twenty-two, I believe. This regards, the second, the second amendment for the VADI grant regards the twenty twenty-three application, where we received approximately eight million dollars for the eastern region of the broadband study area. This also recites the project funding, page two, sections two and two point one of the original agreement are revised to read. There's some revisions. Two point two, on page two, it regards our contribution that we agreed upon that we're using ARPA monies. And other than that, that's really, I checked with Michael Ambroster today. He's, he wa, he's with River Street now. He was the director at the Western Pea Mountain Planning District Commission. And I just wanted to make sure that this is just basically a repeat, an amended repeat from last year's contract that we signed, and they need this by October fifteenth in order to meet the deadline with DHCD.
Is there any county funds in this, involved in this?
Yes, sir. The, and second page, two point two, for, it's a third sentence down. To supplement the RD, RDOF funding, VADI grant funding, and the twenty twenty-three county VADI, VADI grant, the county agrees to supplement the county contribution by providing at least seven hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred fifty dollars in additional funding.
But that was ARPA funds, correct?
That is correct.
That's right, okay. I mean, it, it's all taxpayer money and, and stuff like that. I get that. I don't mean to downplay that importance, but this is not physical, out of our general fund, being paid just to offer money, okay?
That's correct, sir.
I'm new to this, and I have a question. Where is this stuff going?
Northwest, Nottaway County and Southwest, in your district.
That's why I'm asking, 'cause I hadn't seen any.
Who's, who's monitoring all of this?
That's what I'm saying.
I'm doing my part on this. It's gonna be, the, the West Pea Mountain Planning District Commission is over, is serving as the oversight. They're the base organization to seek this funding, with River Street as well. And I attend monthly meetings, and that's my involvement in this.
Is there, is there a map showing where it's going?
Yes.
Yes, it's in the office. I can.
This much money involved. We ought to be getting regular status updates on this.
And Michael, and I could speak to Michael about that, 'cause I believe they're amenable to that.
Right, yeah, yeah, so if we could get like.
Coming my way, I wanna know when it's gonna get there.
Yeah, like, like, like targets, like targets, and then if they're on target, you know, with their, with their updates.
Okay, and we can discuss this further, and I can reach out to Michael. But I do wanna say that I was on vacation during this month's meeting, but last month's meeting, they, they are looking at, for our region, Amelia and Nottaway, but it should be out at the end of the quarter for construction. And related to that, and I'll wait for your action, then I have a part two of this.
Okay.
Update.
Okay.
And all of this is built into the budget?
Yes, as far as I know. I, I was, I was excluded from that process, I'll be honest, so.
Ms. Chakotan, if, if it's okay with you, when we get, when I have Philip at the office, we'll make that a priority. And we, we, we will dive into that. Is that all right with you, Philip?
Yeah, I just, my one question to you, Greg, and, and I, I don't know the answer. The seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, albeit as ARPA, is that different than the original agreement? Where this is a supplement? Is there any changes on the county's contribution?
No, sir.
That's the same amount that was on the original?
Yes.
Agreement, okay.
And again, I, I did not manage that process. I, never mind. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. All right, any more questions, board members? And, and Ms. Chakotan, we'll get on, we'll get on that first part of the week, if, if, if I can stay here for an hour or something next week. All right, all right. Thank you, Greg. I appreciate it, man.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. The MOU with the schools. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, did you have?
Yeah, real quickly, I wanted to give you that, just in case I might have you sitting waiting for me to hand out more stuff. This regards, part of what you're asking about, where things are gonna go. Well, this is the equipment shelter, proposed equipment shelters. I walked the sites with Doug Cox, with River Street, a few months ago, and he just got these to me.
Oh, that's all the same thing. I'm sitting out.
No, there's like three different.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, let me check on those real quick.
I don't see anything on forty-nine.
Well, this is, you gotta have the equipment before you have the work.
It's forty-nine in the county.
I'm talking about forty-nine safe.
But.
Yeah, I've been waiting for this for years.
Okay, what I'm handing y'all is our maps of the proposed equipment facility, where we're gonna run the lines to from each of the respective localities, three sites. The three sites for equipment buildings, two of them are on county owned property. The first one being on East four sixty, a few hundred feet west of Janestown Road. They wanna put an equipment building there. It's a fifty by, approximately fifty-five fifty pad, and the equipment shelter will hold the cables running through to the networks.
Oh, that's where Sonny wanted us to build the animal shelter, right there.
But the second, the second county owns place, that's on the Lewiston Plank Road and four sixty. It's behind the Burkeville Convenience Center.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yes, sir. And what they, the one, this is the one, I don't wanna say glitch, but the one ask that Mr. Cox had was that if you all approve these sites, and they'll afford the lease for that, the details.
Okay.
Is having a lock tour, both parties can enter, the landfill folks, as well as River Street to do maintenance on the equipment shelter. The third site is owned by the LRA on Cox Road. And I'm, I just wanna make sure y'all are okay with this. I've mentioned this several months ago, about going on these site visits. The zoning, the zoning Cox Road, general business. On the length, Lewiston Plank Road, general business. On the one that's near Janestown Road, it's a conservation residential, residential, excuse me. The county owns the convenience center site. The county owns the site near that, I don't know what it was, a, a honky-tonk. I'm not sure what it was, nip joint or whatever. I'll say it. And then the third one, the Local Resource Authority owns.
So if, did I hear you correctly, the county had the potential to lease these three properties? Well, the LRA would lease one, and the county would lease the other two?
That's what we need to dig in on.
Okay.
Again, this is just sort of coming at me, and.
Yep.
So we can, we might sneak a little revenue out of this.
Now, we can just.
Or give it to them, because they're gonna give us a broadband.
Uh, yeah, fortunately, I don't have the power to do that, so, put it, put that back to y'all. But I think this is demonstration that we're making progress. There's some hangups with, 'cause we're part of, well, Campbell County, Bedford County, Pennsylvania County, Charlotte County, and then our county, and Amelia County. So we're looking, we're the eastern fringe of all this work. So they're working toward us.
All right.
Just to be clear.
All right, board members, uh, you know, okay, all right, board members, we're gonna take a quick five-minute recess. You wanna do the school folks?
Man, this is eight miles from my house.
I would recommend approving them, but can they be shifted over closer to the traffic lines and that sort of?
No, that's.